Six o'clock, this is another Select Board Budget Workshop on Tuesday, February 19th. Welcome everybody. We have several department budgets to go through this evening. At least one board member has indicated they'd like to make, say something brief before we start, so I will offer that opportunity to every member of the board and for that matter, the Budget Committee. Anybody has anything brief to say to start with, then feel free.
Thank you. Anyway, I reflected on last week's meeting, and although my principles remain unchanged, my position on a couple of things may have. All right, the purpose of this, I think it's important that we back up and think about what the purpose of this part of the budgeting process is, and it's primarily to learn what's in the budget, where the money is proposed to go, what's in and what's out, so that as we get further down in the path, we can go through the process of vetting to a higher level. I think last week, we got into some of the vetting activity, probably in more detail than we may have needed to. The taxpayers of Rockport have taken on significant burden in the last year. We've had a 9% increase in our mill rate. Voters have signed up for major projects such as the middle school, the Mary E. Tyler renovations, there's 30-plus million right there, a new library, obviously, on our end. And then, of course, last week, we talked about the valuation changes and the valuation of the town dropping close to $100 million. So, the financial squeeze is there. The town manager has proposed a budget within the LD1 guidelines, and I'm tending to embrace that amount. We have limited resources, both in time, money, and people, and whatever we need to do to stay as close to that as we can, I think would be prudent at this juncture, as the President once said. The town manager has the responsibility of managing his or her spend within the total budgeted amount that's approved by the voters. What happens between departments and between lines is up to the town manager to manage and not for me to judge. So, you know, we received a list of what was removed from the rolled-up plan last week with what was cut, the 700-plus thousand in projects and expenses. I think what we need to do now is look at the list, and that's what the purpose of the workshop is, look at the list of the discretionary spend, the projects, the work that's been left in the budget, then we compare that to what was cut and see, you know, what the final outcome is of what stays and what goes. So, our job during this process ought to be, assistant identifying any further cost-reduction opportunities, review the list of the projects and spend that remained, as your first cut was proposed, so that we know what's in there and what's not in there. Last week, we learned what was taken out, but I don't, I haven't seen fully, which I'm sure we will, what's still in. And then, do any reprioritizing during the subsequent work session. Stick the LD number, excuse me, the LD1 number as best we can, and I think that's approach, at least it's going to be my approach, is to do more listening and less talking and debating $100 here, there, and between lines, because that's not value-added. The town manager manages the total spend. We tell them how much. They have the discretion to move stuff when it comes to the actual spend between buckets. That's all I have to say about that.
Yeah, I've always viewed these sessions with the department heads as a first pass, where we're hearing, you know, what the proposals are and how they've been shaped by the town manager, and then, once we're through with these sessions, and we have three of them this week, this is the first of three, then the board and the Budget Committee will get back together, and then we really get into dealing with the horse trading. It is valuable, I think, to look at some of the lines as we go through this first pass and to say, what if we did this, what if we did that, and what if we added some dollars here, took some dollars away, but we're not making any decisions at this point. We're just, as Jeff said, we're learning. And some things that we come up in these sessions will get brought forward and put into the final budget, others may not. It just depends on how we go, so. Anybody else have any other initial comments?
Okay, if not, first on the docket tonight is the Police Department on page 149, actually 150 is where the guts of it start. So, Rick, I'll let you give a little overview.
Yeah, I can, Ken, just to follow up on Jeff's comments, thank you, Jeff. You know, I think it is important, these meetings are a place for everybody to learn, and particularly, we have a lot of new people. It's a complex budget, and there's a lot of new people here, so it is a place to be able to ask questions and learn and understand. I mean, some of the people, some people on this have dealt with budgets for many, many years. The municipal budget is a little different, but it's still a budget, and I think there's a lot of information here, and this is a, you know, it's a healthy process, so ask, you know, ask your questions, get your, you need to understand what's in here, and so that we can move forward. Megan and I will, we've got, on our docket for next week is to work on, you know, where our UFP is and what we can recommend so that we can help you target in on how much of the UFP can be used and how we can accomplish some of the goals and stay as close to LD1 as we possibly can, because I agree with you. I think there is, the voters in Rockport have been asked for a lot of money over the years, and we have to pay attention to that. And, you know, I think we do a pretty good job, but I think we also need to be cognizant of that there's only so much water in that well. And, you know, so we'll work, we'll work on that and help through that, help you guys through that process.
Just for the record, I agree with that, and I agree with what Jeff said, it's just that I think that's pretty much where I stood last week, too, so.
So, the Police Department budget, I'm just, to start, I mean, I don't know how you guys want me to do this, but I'm, what I'm going to try to do is just give you like a bottom-line explanation of what's changed, the major change in this budget, and then ask, let you guys ask questions, or, I mean, that's my sense is that you're more comfortable with that, so we'll see how this goes. If you want me to do a more, a lengthier explanation, I can do that also. But this budget is, shows a $2,668 increase, decrease in expenditures. This is largely, there's a lot of moving things here, but largely, we, you know, over the past couple of years, we've had a lot of upgrades in equipment that we had to make over the past couple of years. So, that inched our budget up. Those purchases have all been made and are all part of a new replacement schedule process, so we're in good shape with those replacements. So, we're not having to do those over again, those are the, those one-time items, the one-off items that are in the budget. So, this budget is down $26,000, in spite of, there's, you know, there's some increases because of pay and some other things, but it's still, the bottom line is it's down about $20,000, $26,000. So, we're here to answer any questions.
I have a couple, and Randy is here, and this topic has come up in recent years, so I'll ask again.
Let me guess.
About the administrative assistant position and how that fits in with what our needs are in the department right now, because when you first came over, I know you had an administrative assistant in Camden and still do as far as I know, and we asked the question, how much is needed for administrative assistant hours here, so I'll ask it again, where are we with the needs and that?
We reduced it to halftime, and I feel that we do need to have that presence there for people that need to come in, get concealed weapons permits, accident reports, somebody that they can call for Rockport business at least a couple of times a week. Craig currently works Tuesday, Wednesday, from eight to four, and then half a day on Thursday till noon time. You know, it's, it depends on what you, the amount of service the town of Rockport wants out of the Police Department as far as the administrative assistant.
So, you proposed a budget of $605,000 and change. Manager proposal, 601. Round numbers, out of that $4,000, is there anything that was cut that you feel strongly about, or is it just little bits here and there?
You know, it's little bits here and there. I agree with Rick's figure. I had put some money in to get radios, to replace the portable radios, as explained last year, at some point, we're going to go to digital service. I just can't seem to get the date that that's going to happen, even when Mark was the chief, we was talking about it then, so. I can't wait any longer to replace these portables, they're, I've got two officers sharing one portable right now, and that's not efficient. So, what I've done is, I'm going to take the $2,500 we had in the budget this year, and I'll also take some money out of the safety equipment line in the current budget, and that should give me enough to buy those radios. I've already ordered them, so that takes care of that. The $1,000 was to replace, you know, we do have a mobile radio that's in the station, and I have one more mobile radio that should be replaced in the cruiser. As I have been setting up new cruisers, I've been putting a dual-band radio in those, so this will get us to where we need to be.
So, does everybody understand what he's, what he's talking about there, that they're switching over to a digital radio frequency in Knox County?
Let me explain it a little further. In order for this to happen, every agency in the county of Knox, including fire departments, will have to switch over to digital service.
At the same time?
At the same time. It is an incredibly costly thing to do, so that's why we really can't get nailed down on a date.
Keep in mind, they were talking about it.
Exactly.
They've been talking about it.
Obviously, the digital service, I think the federal government will push us at some point.
So, one of the things that I touched on earlier was you're fully staffed now?
Yes.
And that accounts for your overtime line being, even if you double it, you're at 30, just to whisk over 33,000. But yet, you've budgeted 43. Could you lower your overtime and put some in your radio?
I think what I would like to do is go with this budget as proposed, because this is my first year as having full staff from July 1st, hopefully through July 1st. I've had two prior years where we were short-staffed, we had people at the academy, so I'm getting a better grasp for these numbers, and I hope to reduce the cost even further, once I can see that.
So, and that goes, your career development reserve of $35,000, that covers what?
That is for, if we hire an officer who has worked for another agency, and they are out of the academy for less than five years, we have to pay a prorated amount for that, if we are billed by that agency.
I have several questions, actually. In terms of line 3090?
Yep.
The parking enforcement, is that just for the harbor or throughout the village?
I think he was going up through the village last year.
He was doing the whole village, yeah.
Okay.
And that probably should have been worded, but I'm not looking to increase his time during the summer, and I'm not looking to bring additional officers over here. That pays for if, say, Rockport was down when we had people at the academy, I always offer those overtime shifts to the Rockport officers first. Obviously, sometimes they get burned out and don't want to work, so I could bring a Camden officer, vice versa, if Camden needed somebody. I always offer it to the officers in that department first, and I don't offer it unless those officers have been given that chance.
And line 3620, you are at automatic vehicle locators, but what's that?
Yes, those are automatic vehicle locators. There's a GPS system in the cruiser that I can pull up from my phone or from my desktop to, we can locate our cruisers at any time.
Okay, great.
That's a safety issue that, I don't ever want to have that conversation with a loved one that we can't find their, their loved one in a cruiser if something happens.
And then, down under Supplies, 5405 and 5505, the explanation says it's being increased, but the percentages are minus, because I'm a little confused.
I'll have to defer to Megan. We are getting new computers, is that why we decreased them?
The number has gone down.
Yeah.
It's just worded wrong.
So, it's actually?
A decrease, yeah.
It is a decrease. Okay, so the explanation is wrong. Okay, thank you.
Mark, you were finishing?
So, what I heard is you're good with the 601 as proposed, you can live with it and manage to it.
And we are going down to two vehicles, is that what I'm reading in the?
We're not buying a new cruiser this year.
We are, yeah.
Well, we did this year, but we won't next year.
My plan is to keep the oldest car and use that as of July 1st, I'll put that into a secondary role, and we will put the new cruiser that we just set up here in this last year into primary service. I just got one out of the body shop last week, and I have another one in the body shop this week. Yes, sir?
Okay. Okay, I'm going to ask a couple pages of questions. You have four patrol officers and a sergeant. Does this provide us with 24/7 coverage?
Yes, yes, in fact.
Is there enough to do for services, say, between 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM, Monday through Friday, that we need to have an officer available at a maintenance call?
I think going away from 24-hour coverage would be a mistake.
Realizing how well mutual aid works with the fire department and having our sister town so nearby, as well as Knox County, is there a way of having shared resources to cover these late-night hours?
Sheriff's Department is not 24-hour coverage.
And how do the towns without their local department manage in those early morning hours without?
They call the dispatch service, and they get somebody up, and they respond from home.
Or a state police trooper?
No, you won't.
They're not, they're not available either?
I haven't seen a lot from the state police in the county of Knox for the last few years.
I think what they do, there's a certain timeframe, which I won't mention, that the deputy goes home on the overnight, and he's subject to call-out within that first couple of hours of going home, and whoever comes out in the morning is subject to call-out from that point forward, so there.
Right.
As the response time during those hours.
What happens, too, is that Camden has the same situation, I think you have one officer on it. So, with the shared chief and a little bit of the shared responsibility, we basically have two officer coverage, because there's times that you don't want one officer responding, they need backup.
I appreciate that, and I recognize that this is a very dangerous job, and I want an officer that walks up to the window of a car to have backup available when he needs it. These are strictly budget questions, and that's why I prefaced it with a second question.
We do also have a 24-hour-a-day hospital that we have to supply service to, and that is increasing.
And that would be for?
What's that?
And that would be for what? If somebody goes nuts in the?
Emergency room calls, I mean, we are quite busy with the hospital.
There are a lot.
Okay. Are there charge-backs to the hospital if you get called or, if you go to investigate? And this is going to be more of a fire department question, but?
You can ask it.
When you are, when you are called to the scene of an accident and you have to do more than law enforcement things, is there a charge-back to the insurance company if somebody does?
On the Police Department side, no, but the Fire Department can add suppression costs, and I can let Chief pay.
I'll ask that question later. The, I would like to have some consideration made that we could cover some of these overnight expenses through a mutual aid thing, and I understand it's great to have an officer in Camden and one here that can back each other up, but when we're talking about not paving any roads in the town this year and facing loss of a critical infrastructure, I think that we have to look at many aspects of saving money. And Rick said in his premise was he cut everything to LD1 without going to manpower, and that, I guess, is one of the questions that I'm asking.
Let me just throw this out.
Sure.
How would you feel if you were the victim of a domestic violence assault, and you had to wait for a deputy from Knox County to arrive in a town that has had 24-hour police coverage for as long as, like, a year? Those are the things you have to take into consideration. It's those critical minutes that an officer can be there by having 24-hour coverage. Town wants to go away from 24-hour coverage, you know, that's something you can do, recommend it.
And I understand and appreciate that. Sir, I just wonder if there is a mutual aid ability that would provide that coverage?
I think what you're asking is for another town to come over and take care of the issues.
Right.
Well, if we were to share, instead of having two officers, one in each town on active duty, if you had one on-call officer that went on, is on-call for two hours after his shift, officer coming on is on-call two hours before his shift, and you do Monday, we do Tuesday, back and forth.
I think you would run into a huge union issue. We have unions in the town of Rockport, and we have a union in the town of Camden.
And once again, that's education.
Sure, no problem.
I don't understand what those obligations are.
I think what you would find in that case is, the Rockport Police Union would say, no, any patrol time would be designated, Rockport Patrol time, and offered to our officers first. I think the Camden Police Union would say the same thing.
Has there been discussion on forming one police department between the two towns?
Yes, we have a beautiful book that was published, 12 years ago.
You do.
Yeah. And it was decided at that time that the two towns did not want to combine.
It was a governance issue that couldn't be resolved, if I remember correctly.
And I think, you know, to further answer the question, yes, the topic has come up, and actually, you know, the first, a first step in that direction was having the shared chief.
And that's worked out well.
It has worked out well.
So, we've saved money, thank you.
It has worked out real well, and I will say, I asked the same questions as you did about the overnight patrols, I think, three or four years ago, and I got the response from Chief P. I. Davis that was similar to what he said tonight, and I think, you know, I don't know that you could save a whole person, you probably could save a half a person, I don't know that it's worth the bureaucratic costs.
And then, I promise to wrap up here. The line for the overtime of $43,500, that sounds like an awful lot of overtime, that's about the salary of one patrol officer?
It is a lot of overtime. Like I said, I'll know better, and I think there may be some room for adjustment in that figure as we get closer and the Select Board look at this budget, because I will be further into the year, and there may be a chance to make an adjustment.
Okay, thank you. Another question that I have is on your miscellaneous contracts, I think that says 3090?
Yep.
$4,000. That's a lot for miscellaneous line. Just one more question from Aven, do we have some clarification at some point on what's involved in that miscellaneous?
That's a parking enforcement line, that, we have a contract with Camden to provide parking enforcement for us, until we pay their parking officer to come over during the summertime, and?
You know where I'm going to go back to, right? But I'm not going to.
Pay them for that service.
Okay.
The same thing with animal control.
Today, in another forum, I sat through a presentation by Sheriff Carroll, Knox County, and there are a lot of things, I think, around law enforcement and activity that we don't always appreciate if you don't live it every day. In this county, Knox County averages, just in the Sheriff's Department, six out of seven days a week responds to a domestic violence call. The use of oxycodone and all that stuff is beyond comprehension, not only in mid-coast Maine, but, I mean, all of Maine, the prescription rate was once some ridiculous number, higher than the national average. These were the significant issues that he proposed, and I know that the chief and the chief over here don't always share all the details of all the things that they have to deal with on a day-to-day basis, but I am truly appreciative of 24-hour coverage. I am truly appreciative of the activities that they do. I mean, to have, remember, we have one full-time fire chief, and everybody else is a volunteer. And when I think of the primary objectives of municipal government, safety, right, fire, police, public works, all two of the big ones, so. My concern is, I just want to make sure that you are?
Yeah, I'm good.
Thumbs up and able to live with the 601.
Yep.
And I think what I heard Randy say also was that overtime number, which was brought up, and I was going to bring it up also, that before we finish the budget, we may have an opportunity based on your new data, before we have to craft an article.
I can tell you all this, if there's money in this budget that I don't have to spend, I'm not going to spend it. You can have it back.
And I think that's something that we all, all need to also reflect on and appreciate. It's a budget. Doesn't mean you have to spend it. The mission of any department manager is to save, 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 and not spend their budget.
One of the things we need to also remember is this $35,000 for the career development is also a one-of.
Doesn't last year's one?
Yeah, there's nothing in this year's.
Yeah, there's not.
So, I think of?
That's what we created.
Yeah, it's gone.
And I think, I would make a general comment, because we noticed that most of the cuts in this budget came in reserve accounts for the vehicle reserve and the radio reserve, and I've looked through the whole budget now, we go through, we're going to notice a lot of these reserve cuts going through, and I think maybe it might be worthwhile to hold off on talking about the reserves until we get to the end, and then we can, we can go prioritize, you know, and say, well, what do we want to do with these reserve accounts, because Rick had to cut them, almost all of them, to meet LD1.
I think that's a good approach, too, is to, let's look at all the reserves at one time, because otherwise, if we look at it piece by piece, we're going to get nuts.
We'll say, well, we should have that, and then at the end, we're going to have a big number.
And I just wanted to say, too, I'm not in favor of cutting the 24/7 coverage, and but, but also, you guys have an inter-local agreement, right, with Camden, so that my understanding is that, you know, when, when a sergeant's on duty in Camden and there isn't one on duty in Rockport, then, you know, you share those kinds of services, so it's not just?
Supervision.
The supervision kind of thing, so it's not just the police chief. So, we're saving money there, too, by having a supervisory person that is being shared.
What we wanted to do in that case is, if the sergeant in Camden hears something going on in Rockport, the chase starts, for instance. They have the ability to call that chase off. Same thing if the Rockport officer, or the Rockport sergeant's on, something's happening in Camden. For liability reasons, you've got extra ears listening out there, we've had a Camden supervisor terminate a chase that started in Rockport before the agreement took into place, but it was a good call, nobody was injured and whatnot. That's worth its weight in gold, just that extra ability.
You're not necessarily saving money, though, Devers, because you still have a contract that requires the backfilling of a position, so even though your sergeant may not be there, you still have that, that 10 hours of position that needs to be filled.
Well, that's not always true either, because the sergeant is off some nights in Rockport, so.
Yeah, yeah, so you don't have to have two sergeants, because you're not covering for, you know, you don't have to have two supervisors.
We've tried to arrange the schedule so that there's the best coverage at the most opportune times. You know, one of the problems is with that night shift, when stuff goes bad, it usually goes bad at that time of the night, and it usually goes bad, you know, for a number of reasons, because of the union, not because of, the people that often get that midnight, that shift, because it's the least desirable shift, are the people that are the newest to the agency. So, they come in and they get, they get stuck on that shift, and it's the, it's a kind of...
Welcome to your new job, you get to work nights, holidays, and probably midnight shift.
And often, it's the least supervised, and so, the idea of having at least two bodies there makes a lot of sense to be able to, and they, and you talk, you mentioned about the idea of word consolidation. You know, while we haven't gotten there quite yet, even the police officers are starting to, like, they work really well together, they train together, they, they know each other, they call each other on the radio, there's, there's a constant line of communication. So, we, we are getting a great service, and so does Camden, because the officers now, they're not, they're not separate departments with a wall between the town, so, you know, when a call is happening in Rockport at two in the morning, the Camden officer is already starting in the direction, is backup for that officer. The officer can, will call him off before they get there, if he's all set, but they automatically now, they're paying attention to each other, and it's, it is a great system that is, we have a very effective police department, and it's because of that relationship between the two towns, I think.
Mark and I unofficially did that years ago, even though we weren't supposed to.
Real quick, Randy, I mean, you're getting the proper challenge to the budget content, to Jeff's point earlier, I mean, we have got to look at places where we can save money in a budget, because in order for us to pay for some of the other things that we're going to have to do, we just got to go through the, go through the process.
I think it's a process.
Megan and I spoke today, this afternoon, about creating, going through and pulling out? out all of the LD1 cuts and putting them together on one spreadsheet for you, and then we can go through and we can separate them out. These are cuts to reserves, these are cuts to these.
That would be very helpful, yeah.
I think that, so when you get to the end of the day, you're trying to fill in the blanks and saying, okay, what are our priorities? You'll have a pretty good list of that.
The other thing that would be helpful is the flip side of that, is make a spreadsheet of all the things that were discretionary spend that you left in.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions on the Police Department budget? I think we've had a good discussion, and, you know, so the new people, continue to ask the questions, that's how you learn. So there's no problem there at all. Okay, next is Animal Control, which is page one eighty for the guts of it. And there is, this is a rather small budget, I'd like Rick to give a brief introduction.
Basically, this budget is basically static. There's, it shows a five hundred and fifteen dollar increase, but there's also a five hundred dollar increase in revenue, based on the prior year's experience in revenues for us. So as I said briefly, is that we contracted the town of Camden for them to provide our animal control services, and it's much reduced. You can see where it used to be at the fifty-three hundred dollar range, fifty-four hundred dollar range, we're down to in the fifteen hundred dollar range.
You have, well, three pages. You talk about the one eighty for the five hundred dollar increase in the animal control officer line for twenty-two, twenty-five, and you look at the explanation page of one eighty-one, it says, increased based on usage and projected usage. And then you go back to page one fifty-six, and you look at your animal bite or tack, animal noise, animal problem, animal welfare, and the numbers for two thousand and eighteen are sixteen percent less than the year before. So they're trending down, but yet you're asking for more, that's where I'm.
I can tell you, when we were putting this budget together, Scott had been right out straight for a couple of months. Dog licenses is another thing that's coming right up, so I thought it would be safe that we increased that. The actuals were at eleven seventy-seven, and the way he was going with dog complaints earlier in the fall and first of the winter.
That was eleven seventy-seven last year, but we haven't apparently spent anything this year.
We have.
They haven't, they haven't billed us for it.
That just needs to be, we talked about that last year.
Yeah, the bill came in after the, when this was prepared.
I do the parking in the first six months, and the dogs, and then because there's gonna be so much time after January, I don't bill monthly on that, or I haven't put in for dog.
I mean, obviously, it helps a little more if we add that stuff in there before.
I can get it for you, where it is actually.
You know what I mean. So I'm just looking at fewer calls. So how many of those animal calls, because I know the officers go out and take care of calls, too, how many of the four that I listed were taken care of by patrol versus?
Without looking at the actual complaint numbers.
But it does happen.
Oh, it does. I mean, I've got an officer in Camden taking care of one tonight. But anything that comes in during the day, Scott usually takes care of, instead of calling him out for overtime rate. If it's just a dog that needs to be picked up and taken to the dog shelter at night, the officers will do that. That again, I mean, that's something you could look at as we get further down. The increase isn't that great.
Well, the increase isn't that great, and the gross amount is not that great, going from previous years when we paid a stipend to an animal control officer, we're down considerably, and we're still getting the service that we need, I think, so.
How much do those little itty-bitty handcuffs cost?
I just think it's interesting for people who don't know that, you know, watching, to note that the state statute requires municipalities to have an animal control officer, so that's required by state law. So just, I just, I didn't previously know that, but yes, right, sure, you can contract it out, but you still have to have one.
Through December, we spent six hundred and thirty-two dollars so far, and that doesn't include the work that will start with dog licenses, which consumes a lot of time.
Yeah, they get, like, notices from the town clerk's office, they get phone calls, and then when they don't come in and pay, the officer has to give them another call.
Wouldn't that be an additional thing that you're assisting to do in the time he's there? I don't think he's drove up that much.
Probably good. We've been very effective on collecting it when the control officer does it.
That's where I'm going.
Yeah, something about the uniform.
He's very proficient, I can tell you that.
Okay, any more questions on animal control? Let's go to the Fire Department, page one sixty-one, one sixty-two.
With this budget, there's not a whole lot of changes in it. There are, you know, I did make some pretty significant cuts to capital items, but Jason's budget is pretty, pretty level. It was an increase of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars, and largely, that is increased due to vehicle reserves that have to go up to keep up with payments that we have for the new fire trucks and SC, and this year, we'll be replacing two SCBA units. Everybody know what those things, those are those breathing apparatus that they wear on the back, and they're about twelve thousand, thirteen thousand bucks a piece. So we'll be replacing two of those units this year.
Which lines are they in?
SCBA's.
Seventy-three, seventy-five.
Oh, that's capital, okay.
Question on that. I see on the notes that you'd originally asked for four, and town manager cut it to two.
Which line is that?
Thirty-two, ten, for the Scott air packs.
Thirty-two, ten's the plow. That's different. Thirty-two, that's not the same.
I think that's the wrong line number.
I don't remember.
Seventy-three, seventy-five. It says to replace four packs this year instead of two.
Two instead of four.
Yeah, that doesn't, why not? Yeah, I don't. The SCBA is seventy-three, seventy-five, and there's, yeah, on the back page, it's right there, seventy-three, seventy, the department had to replace four air packs, twenty-six thousand.
So it is.
Oh, so there is four.
It's four packs instead of.
Right.
Right, instead of two. Oh, I had, I have my explanation backwards. It's four packs instead of two. Yeah, I typically don't, I have a tendency not to cut something like that.
Well, I was gonna ask you not.
Yeah, yeah, I'd have, something like that, I'd.
Can you run us down the situation with the chief's truck? Because it looks in here like we're replacing that truck a year early.
Yes, that's the thinking, is we're ready to do it a year early, Megan?
No, it's gonna cost us ten thousand dollars to repair or replace the plow that is on the existing truck. Doesn't really make financial sense, put ten thousand dollars into a truck that we're gonna trade next year.
That's what I thought.
So it makes better sense to get the truck now, which can be funded through the reserve, so there's no budgetary impact. It just makes better financial sense to replace the vehicle than put that kind of money into the plow.
Can I ask why the plow has failed on that truck?
Because it gets some pretty heavy-use plowing around fire hydrants. I think that's the biggest place.
I plow eighty-eight fire hydrants, so I don't typically plow the road like the highway does and go through cutting edge. If you look at eighty-five percent of our fire hydrants, they're ten-plus feet off the road, so plowing down over the embankments, around the rocks, around the telephone poles. Unfortunately, most departments hire people back throughout the winter to do that. I don't have that ability to do that, so that's why we use the plow for that.
Just seems like we haven't had it before.
Well, that was gonna be my question, because I asked the mileage thing last year, and this is the fourth year we've had it?
No, three, four, five, six.
Yeah, this is the fifth year.
The fifth year, and the mileage is?
Sixty-three, I think I said the other day. Sixty-three.
So the truck should garner a pretty good trade value, I would think, if you traded in.
I had a question about line thirty-two, ten. You, the department had put in fifteen thousand, the manager cut it to five, but again, the explanation said it was increased by ten thousand to cover the cost, so is that part of what you're saying?
The cost of a plow.
Okay, so that's what's being shifted over to the chief.
Yeah, the department had an increase, and the town manager decreased.
Okay, great, thank you. Oh, another question, though, too. Line seventy-three, twenty-five, the electrical improvements, was cut for LD1. Did you wanna keep that for the reserves? It's not marked as a reserve.
Which one? The electrical improvements one?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three, twenty-five.
That's for the, I'm not getting it right. That's for the additional electric drops, correct, in replacing the LEDs?
Yes.
And the LED lights. And so what was your question? I'm sorry.
Why is it being, what's it for, and why is it being cut?
It's for additional electric drops for the trucks, around the trucks, for power, and also to replace all of the remaining, the remaining fluorescent lights with LED lights.
Fluorescent lights where?
In the station.
In the station.
So this fluorescent, you know, the regular fluorescent tubes, and they've been, you've replaced how many, how many of them?
Thirteen.
Thirteen out of how many?
Quite a few.
Yeah, I don't know, a lot, fifty or sixty.
Includes the base, and police, I mean, it's all over.
What's the breakdown between the fluorescent bulbs and the stuff that you need for your trucks?
I don't, the quote I got was quite some time ago on that, so, I mean, it could be higher right now. I don't have the exact breakdown.
It'd be interesting to see that, because I would presume you need, the lights for the trucks are a safety issue?
What we're trying to do is be more efficient. LED lasts pretty much forever on most bulbs now, where fluorescent, anywhere you go, these are fluorescent, same thing, they glow frequently, where if you go to LED, they don't. So instead of having to buy a box of light bulbs every so often, hopefully it'll maintain with the same light bulb for an extended period of time. So that, we're just trying to get more efficient. The building's, you know, sixty years old, so I'm trying to switch over to save on the electricity and go over to the LED.
Right, but Rick said some of that is something for your trucks.
It's an electrical drop for the truck when it's pulled into the back to keep power going to that truck.
Think of like an extension cord.
Okay.
What they do is they run a power over to where that truck is gonna be. They put in an outlet with a reel, you gotta buy the reel, and then that drops and plugs into the truck. It keeps your flashlights, your portables, anything else on the truck that may be charging, charging at all times. So that way, when you go, everything's charged.
How important is that to you?
Well, I hope that, it's pretty essential, I mean.
Okay.
How do you do it now? Do you drap an extension cord?
We have to leave the trucks in certain positions. We don't have the ability to move them around if we need to.
So you can do it now?
We can, yes.
Okay, yeah, but I'd still like to see a breakdown.
I mean, it's not, that's why, when you asked, I said, if that's something that you're gonna cut, then I'm fine with that, because where the trucks are currently positioned, that's fine, but we do move them around from time to time, and so.
Gotcha, thank you.
Rick, are you taking advantage of any Energy Efficiency Main projects?
Yeah.
I'm liking that one covered.
Potentially would, you know, potentially, I'm not sure if we're doing it partially.
We do get a rebate already from Electricity Main for some of the lights that Jason has changed over.
We changed some of the ballasts over, and we have a ton of lights, obviously, throughout. So we did last year, Ride Out Electric came in and replaced not only the lights, but I guess the ballast, they're new, too, there's an efficient, and we got a partial rebate on that. So whenever we work with Ride Out, they always submit for the energy.
Keep in mind, a lot of these cuts I don't like to make, and they're not ones that I'm happy about making, but.
Well, and it's our job at the end to go back through and determine, you know, well, we think this one is important enough to reverse the cut, and maybe we can find some savings someplace else, or maybe we have to do one.
It's a small dollar. I don't think we wanna spend a lot of time talking about the light bulbs, but I would say that the replacement of an LED, of a fluorescent bulb with an LED bulb is probably about the same cost if you're replacing the ballast as well. You can pull the ballast, go directly to the LED, and probably spend the same amount of money. So I would just say, rather than the reserve, if we have to cut it, just show a preference to switching to LED when you're in a position of having to replace a bulb and a ballast.
Jason, would you just remind me, there's three, under supplies, there's three fairly large lines that recur year after year after year. First is radios and pagers, the other's the fire equipment, and finally, safety gear. You know, what are we replacing in those three lines every year?
Well, obviously, the pagers. We buy anywhere from seven to thirteen pages a year. They right now run around four hundred and eighty-five dollars a piece. They, some of them last longer than others. They break very easily. There's magnets inside that cause a lot of issues. The portables, we're trying to slowly change over portables. We still have some portables in the fire truck that we checked on the dates, are from the early, or the mid nineteen nineties that Bruce had bought. The dates are still on them, those are still in the back of the new truck, so we still have some older radios that we're trying to replace. The fire equipment is everything that goes on the trucks, from replacement of the chainsaws that we did this year, one of the chainsaws got replaced. We bought several new halogens, we bought an axe, cold water rescue suits that run eight hundred dollars a piece. We lost one of those this year, so we had to replace two of those, the helmets for those suits. Nozzles, the nozzle, one of the nozzles I just bought was eleven hundred dollars for one nozzle. And then the safety gear.
Those things wear out, or?
Not necessarily the nozzles, but again, some of the equipment we have is very old. We're slowly trying to replace bits and pieces of the nozzles. I'm more than willing to give a tour anytime and show you some of the new equipment to some of the old equipment. The new truck has a lot of the newer equipment, but if you go and look at Engine twenty-one, twenty-two, those still have a lot of the older brass fittings on there, so there's still older equipment on those trucks. The firefighter, or the safety gear is the turnout gear. Turnout gear is good for ten years, as I indicated during, per the NFPA nineteen sixty-two. One set of turnout gear for one firefighter is thirty-two hundred dollars. We're supposed to buy six this year, so we are, obviously, we try to work with that, as well as a few different grants and donors, to try to help us keep up with that. All interior firefighters have two sets of gear, so we're talking, one firefighter has almost seven thousand dollars' worth of equipment just to put on. You go into a burning building, and that gets, in any way, shape, or form, it gets compromised. That gear is no longer in use, so you have to buy a brand-new set. So at any time, we could have to buy one set, two sets, you just don't know. If it gets contaminated in an accident with some type of diesel fuel, or anything like that, that's contaminated and it can't be cleaned, we have to be able to buy a new set. We don't keep a lot on the shelf, simply because it does expire.
My point first. At our garages, we replaced with LED lighting, and Efficiency Main paid for one hundred percent. So just, I know you've got a contractor, but you may wanna ask about that. The question that I'd asked earlier, when the Fire Department responds to an accident scene, whether to spray foam, to suppress possible fire, or to help direct traffic, or assist the officers, is that billable back to the insurance companies?
The way I have been explained under state statute, unless it's a criminal act, or it is above and beyond the duty of that Fire Department, so if we have a hazmat situation, we're not hazmat certified, but we have to attend it, we can submit restitution. The five-plus years that I've been here, and the four years I was Lincolnville Chief, I've only gotten restitution once. It's very, very, very far between.
In some of the unfortunate situations where we, our trucking company has been in accidents, we have, or our insurance company has reimbursed departments, so I don't know if it's an issue of knowing what code to check on the bill.
Well, most of the accidents we seem to deal with at night that are criminal, are OUIs, and a lot of them don't have insurance. Insurance is one of the big things, and I can tell you, probably most of the cases, they don't have insurance. Multiple wildfires that we've had, where someone was burning illegally, we've submitted, the home insurance isn't gonna pay for it.
It's a lot easier to get restitution out of commercial insurance than it is private insurance.
It's a lot.
Easier.
Easier, okay.
So like I said, I think I'm thirteen or fourteen different restitutions that I've submitted, and I've only received one. It's very difficult.
And my other final point, I guess, would be, if you're tearing up a plow, trying to get two hydrants that are off the road or whatever, is there another tool that maybe Public Works could attach to a vehicle and clear the snow without, I'm thinking, an excavator with a snow blower on the end, or something like that, that could reach out? It's not.
I'm sure there's something out there, but to get, and this is no offense to Public Works, but to get them to have the time to do that, they're too busy. There's zero chance. I mean, to get the front-end loader is usually three or four days after a major storm to get parking lots cleared.
It just seems.
I mean, we get one big storm, I mean, if it's eight inches, when you get done, you're talking a two, three-foot snowbank, and some of these fire hydrants are fifteen feet back, so.
I understand.
I mean, this is over five years, too. This isn't just. This isn't just one winter of beating on a plow.
So this plow lasted five seasons?
Yes.
Oh, for some reason, I thought it was a three-year.
No, 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 no. This is the first vehicle that I was issued. It's been five years of plowing.
First time the chief had a vehicle on.
So this isn't just a one-year...
No, no, it just seems like... And I'm not questioning your...
No, no, I understand that.
If it's just might not be the right tool for the job, and so.
So the same question I asked Randy. You live with the proposal here by the town manager?
Yes.
Is there anything on here, anything that you think you should be getting that you really need, not really want, but really need?
No, I have a lot of... No. From the fire department budget now, I'm more than content with it at this time.
Okay. Because to my earlier point, between schools, emergency responders, and Public Works, the three primary missions of the municipal government. And I want to make sure, at least from my end, that...
And I want to call everybody's attention to page 169. This is something that we asked Chief for life, because every year, he's done a lot of work applying for grants, and you have to apply for a lot to get a few. And this is just a summary of what he did this year as far as applying for grants. That's work that I would like to press on.
One of the things with the fire department that is recognized is, I mean, we have a top-notch department that is pretty much staffed by one full-time professional and then a whole batch of thirty-plus tall firefighters. And they respond in an amazing fashion. I mean, they, I don't know how they do it, but they get to calls really quickly, professional. The one thing we do for them is we make sure that they're properly equipped, that they have the right safety gear, and we take care of them with all of that stuff. And they provide a huge, huge service to the town. I mean, the total budget is, how much is it, $600,000? $300,000, $400,000? Four hundred thousand dollars, but we're getting double that in service with the firefighters that we have, the call departments. Jason does an excellent job motivating the call department. In times where towns are having, struggling maintaining call departments, our call department is growing, which is a testament to...
Yeah, that's... I would reiterate that, is that a lot of surrounding towns are having trouble. I know Camden has had to go to, I think, they have three or four paid firefighters.
Is there four full-time?
Four full-time paid firefighters, and we haven't had to do that because of the strength of our department, and a lot of that is Jason and before Bruce who really get people to buy into the idea that they're serving their town. And so if we had to do that, this budget would be a lot bigger, or we'd have to pay for career firefighters here in our... And I know from watching things around the area that was mentioned earlier, if there's a structured fire, it's an automatic mutual aid call. And there's an awful lot of times where structured fire in another town, Rockport firefighters are showing up first, they're the first one on the scene. And that's a testament to the dedication of our department.
Yeah, it's absolutely fantastic. And I saw something on the, I think it was on the news the other day, I'm trying to remember where I saw it, but about how, to highlight the point that somebody made that with younger people, that they're just having a hard time to get younger people to step up and volunteer, especially for firefighting. And it's just awesome that we have the group that we have.
And to your point, I think the PR work that's been done by this department and by this chief, including our 1790 intersection collections, in terms of talking with kids and things, I think what Ken is saying and what you said, that what they're doing, the image of that fire department, it's not any longer an old fuddy-duddy-type image. And I think that's been a big plus for a lot of the work we've done the last few years. So thanks for that.
I guess one more question on the West Rockport Fire Department, or Fire Station.
That's a, we'll get there.
I just want to point out, too, that this year, we also broke a record. We had over 232 calls, which is far none, I think it was twenty-nine above with anything we've ever had. Last year was our third highest, so our calls have increased significantly. Year before, we had fifteen mutual aid calls, this year we had thirty-eight. Structure fire calls throughout Camden and Rockland. So we are much busier than we've ever been before. Seventy percent of my firefighters are self-employed. So they're taking time away from their business, unpaid, on vacation, no sick time to attend these calls. We have, on average, anywhere from thirteen to fourteen, it's in-between, average firefighter turnout for any call. Most departments in the entire county, it's about six or seven, so we're double almost any other department out there. We just had a head-on right in front of MRC, and fifteen guys were there within a matter of a few minutes. We've had some calls where we've had twenty-five people show up. So we are, and it's the guys and girls on the department. Royanne Bartley is our main photographer, but it's their dedication to the town, and, you know, what they put into it is huge. We are very fortunate in Rockport, or I should say, you are unfortunate in Rockport. They love the job, they love the people, they love the town. And like, you know, like I said to Rick, that's all they're looking for is, you know, the right equipment to do the right job.
You're running out of parking spaces when you get your firefighter knife.
You should also throw in that, if you haven't got one call, it's always forty.
I wasn't going to bring that up, because we just had one. Thank you, Randy. I appreciate that.
Any further questions for the chief on the fire department budget? If not, we'll move to the emergency management budget, page 196, for the guts of that. And Jason is our EMA director as well.
All of the, most of the cuts that I made to this budget, unfortunately, were in the area of setting up the Richardson Room as an emergency operations center. We don't, we haven't had it, it hasn't been there. But most of the increases in this budget were to set that emergency operations center up. And so basically, all of those, all of the cuts you see are in setting that emergency operations center up, which would be too bad considering where the generator is going in there now. So, but basically, I don't know that any budget escaped cuts, so...
Well, I know for me, these will be high priorities to bend back in. Quite honestly, I can live without the dropdown power cords. We can string extension cords if we have to for a year or two, but the other stuff, we talked about that in the exercise we did earlier this year with Ray coming up from the county to do the exercise about setting up that EOC and having the stuff that we need if we have a true emergency, whiteboards to write notes on, ways to keep track of things that are going on. And, you know, it sounds stupid when you're looking down the list and saying, "We need $50 pens, pencils, and notepads." But that stuff is absolutely critical when you have that situation, you have to have it.
You want to put it in a box and pull everything out together and say, "Okay, here's everything you need for this event."
I can conceptualize what an EOC is, right? But I don't know what we're sacrificing here. Do we have another place where we can actually do this function? So if there's an emergency?
Well, right now, in our plan, I think the EOC is the Public Safety Building, I think. That's the way it is in the plan right now. And over the last couple of years, the board has been working toward getting a better place for it. And part of that was the generator. We did a test, Doug was there, and we did a test with the radio, with the ham. I forget the fellow's name who came over, but...
Fellow Gade.
Yeah, but we tested the radio and found that we had perfect reception at the town office. So we've been working toward this and...
So our decision isn't between nothing and something? It's good or better?
Fire stations are absolute last resort anywhere in the country, because that's where we're coming in and out of.
Right.
It's dangerous, it's not safe. So it's there, but it's an absolute last resort.
Yeah, you want the emergency operations center to be close, but not in the same space.
Gotcha.
So moving on to the training, let's get back to... Have you and your assistant done all the mandatory training and attended the meetings on a monthly basis, one or the other of you?
There was only one meeting that was missed.
We were both out of town.
Only about one out of the twelve months, I think.
And I agree that this is important. But, you know, one of the things that struck me here was that, what a great opportunity to do a fundraiser, to raise the money for this, easily. Yeah, I mean, if it doesn't make the cut, I mean, it's a perfect, I think it's a perfect thing to be able to easily raise those funds for that. I'm talking about the $950, for example, over here with the fifty-four oh five.
Okay, could I ask a question? The EOC amounts are the twenty-five, everything has a little red dot there on page?
Pretty much, yep.
Which totals how much?
Ten thousand, six hundred.
About ten-five.
I couldn't hear you.
Ten thousand, five hundred.
Okay, just for what's in red? I'd vote right now to just stick it back in. I mean, what's the point in talking about this?
Well, I think, like I said, we have to go through this at the end and do all of it, but for me, it's a high priority. This is one of the higher priorities to add back in.
If you're interested in how much of the generator, you might as well have radios actually.
Right, yeah. It's something we've been...
Paper and paints.
It's a no-brainer.
Okay, any other questions on this? Jason, anything else to add here?
This was all, this was Diane, Diane?
Yes.
Diane put all this together. So all the numbers you see, she's the one that did all the research and got all the numbers and the figures, and Megan and them put all this in.
Which page are you on?
I'm sorry?
For EMA.
For the EMA.
Page 197.
So Jason, on that, to Jeff's point before, he asked if you could live with the previous budget. How about on this one? It seems like a lot of the selectmen are saying that this is a priority.
Backing up. You know, it's something, I think Rick will attest, since the day I started here, I felt the town office should have had a generator day one. You know, that's the hub of the entire town, and we didn't, you know, the power went out. I didn't have my email. We've been saying that we've been trying to get this EMA, or the EOC, set up. We've had a few events where we could have used a partial portion of that, so... It's obviously important, I mean, the, you know...
This one's, you can say...
You can say you want it. It's all right.
Yeah, it's okay.
I think it's very important, so I'm just...
Okay.
Question? Thank you. So likely, there's support to put money back in, but it's a tight budgetary season, as it always is. Can you just point to what would be of the items, you know, five items for cut? If you needed to put just three back in, which would it be? Just as we haggle in the future, which of those lines do you want to see back in? If there was a high priority and we wanted to come to a happy end?
The most important to me would be the radios and the wiring, because, I mean, that's the most important thing, is the wiring and the radios.
We can check the supply closet, the pens and stuff like that.
That $1,200, to me, is number one. I mean, the radios are definitely...
What line item, Jason?
So 7371 and 54515 are the two. Because if you don't have the radios in there, that building's going to be pretty much...
I just wanted to hear it from your mouth.
I mean, portables will only work so far. We have plenty of portables, but that's not going to reach over to West Rockport, down to, you know, Rockville.
Well, and if we have the generator there, we have power, you want to use your portables where you don't have power.
Correct.
Yeah, the other items, we, you know, the other items, we can...
The box, the pens, the pencils, we could...
Yeah.
We can make that happen.
Come up with...
Do a boot, or a pen and boot, a pencil drive.
There's all kinds of ways to do it.
And a benefit is for the town to be aware of it, and to know that, and to buy into it, and to know that there's, you know, about the EOC center. I mean, there's a lot of good things.
Well, and one of the things, when we had to pray up for the, you know, if we have an extended power outage town-wide, one of the things that most people in town are going to need is a place to charge their devices. And the EOC will have that capability, people will be able to come in and charge up their phones if they need to have that, so. Okay, so if no more questions on emergency management, then we have the Public Safety Building, which is page 192. And this is the building that houses the fire, the main fire station and the station park.
Did you mention the West Rockport Fire Station?
Phil comes next. Comes next.
So this one, the biggest increase here is in the area of professional cleaning services. We have a contracted custodian to clean that building. As you've heard, that building gets used 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and it gets, it gets used. And so there's an increase in pay for the person that's doing the cleaning. She does an excellent job of keeping that building in really good shape, I believe. So that was one increase. And then there were several decreases in its, you know, the painting and scraping, the trim on the building. Does it need it? Yes, it does, but it, you know, pretty much every budget had some sort of cut.
Well, I have to ask an unpopular question, I'm sure. Because I've seen the cleaning increase shows up in a few other departments as well. How, and I'm not disputing that she does a great job.
I'll ask it.
But how do we give that increase when we're holding everybody else to a 3% increase?
Right, it's a 14% increase here.
And the second part of that would be, is that something you're putting in, or did she give you a written request?
That came, it came from the department heads up, the department heads up.
So there's no written request?
No, just, it's basically rounding, I think it's basically rounding up what we were paying her. She, we were giving a 3% increase typically.
The same thing struck me, we're holding our employees to 3%, why are we giving a 14% increase to a cleaning?
Yep.
She's not the only, oh, sorry, I mean, there's other...
Well, like I say, I'm not disputing that she does a good job.
No, she doesn't actually...
She got a free day off at the Christmas party last year, I think.
I think, that's the second time she's gotten it.
I will say, she does a great job, but...
So the Claire?
If you know that there's one coming, because there's been a written request saying, "I need to go up on my expenses" or whatever.
But it doesn't sound like there is. Is there a written request from her?
I don't know if we get a request from her. No. Stevie?
I guess the question I'd like to ask is, and I maybe should know this, but what does that translate to an hourly rate? And how does that hourly rate translate to what cleaning people are getting in the area for other cleaning services, for other places?
I can't answer that this second.
Because that may be why it's such a big increase. If her hourly rate is below the going hourly rate for cleaning services in the area, then when you jump someone from a way below salary to a more equitable salary, then you have a situation where it's going to translate to a higher percentage. So that, so to me, without knowing what her hourly rate is, or how many hours she works, or does she get paid hourly, does she get benefits, is any...
I assume it's a contract.
Yeah, it's a contract, but it comes out...
She gets 65 bucks per cleaning, and it's going up to 75 a cleaning.
Megan's saying it comes, it comes out to about 25 bucks an hour.
Really?
I think that's pretty standard, actually.
Yeah, I was going to say, most of them are between 30, well, 27 to 35 to 40, so... And that's for residential.
Yeah.
I'm talking residential rates, which is a little different cleaning...
Than government.
Situation than that building. No offense, Jason.
Well, I, I mean, that's just something we have to keep in mind as we go through this process, I think. Because if we're going to hold a line on the increases that we have to think about.
Certainly can do that.
We're not even talking about a town employee, we're talking about contractual person that has not yet made a written request from anybody.
Right.
Right.
I had a question. Line 4105, according to the explanation, it was the amount requested is because of failures on some items at the station.
The fire line monitoring system.
Yeah, what's, how serious is that, that it be repaired?
It's the same as all the town buildings. They all need to be replaced.
Okay.
Especially, this one, this building's the worst.
Right.
Oh, nice.
Are we in the other house?
Oh, I was, thought you were saying, but...
No, this building here is the worst.
The doors right here, I'm sitting this close, for a reason.
All of the systems, all the systems are original to most of the buildings. When they, our system, we just had a radio transmitter put in ours a few years ago just so that it would communicate if the power went out. Some of the detectors up in the ceiling and the attic that are causing the issues are original to whenever the system was put in 20, 30 years ago. Charlie Pearson put them in himself, he remembers literally 20 or 30 years ago. So all of the buildings, if I'm not mistaken, are in pretty dire need of...
And they're, you know, they all suffered the same fate.